So I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee at 6:30 PM. On February 26th. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you guys want to mute and rise and say the pledge along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for that Kirk. So the first item on the agenda is public comment and I have not received anything from anyone. So we're going to keep moving past that and we're going to head to the consent agenda. Is there anybody who wants to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Alright, so Amy, why don't we start with a motion?
Okay, um, one second here. Revised copy, alright. Oh, I move to approve the consent agenda, February 26, 2025.
I will second that, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. I vote yes. Sharon?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Jackie? Was that a yes Jackie? I missed it. Yes. And Joe?
Yes.
Alright, everybody. So that's the consent agenda. We're going to move on. The agenda calls for a school committee chairperson update, but I have nothing additional to share tonight. I would like to now go to our student representative report and I see Ryan. So hi Ryan, go for it.
Hello. So to start things off, the Stu Co is working on organizing the lip dub, which is supposed to come up. In a month or so, so they've been kind of putting together the route and the different songs and things like that. My class, Class 2026 is still running a T-shirt fundraiser, so. The idea behind it was it kind of has like the outline of our building because we're the final people graduating, so that's still for sale. Um, my class is also just going to start organizing the Shamrock Showdown Dodgeball Tournament, which is always fun every year. And then the seniors are working to organize like a kind of basketball tournament of their own for fundraising. And then myself and I think 115 others are going to the Deca State Competition tomorrow, Friday and Saturday. So that will be fun. Is Ava in here?
I don't see Ava.
Alright, I can do the next part two then.
Okay.
So there's a production of The Little Mermaid, which is coming back on March 14th. And this will be in the Thayer Library on, and that's a Saturday. And then North Star Family Services, which is the homeless chapter in Leominster. Are having children stay there right now and they're accepting generally used games at home if they're no longer used. And there's a box in the lobby for any kind of donations. And then Ava and Winston are going to Student Government Day. So I'm sure she can tell you guys a little more about that when she's back with us next time. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks Ryan. I'd like to say good luck at Deca.
Thank you.
And I wonder if anybody has any questions or comments on the student report? Yeah, Sharon?
I just have a question. Ryan, you mentioned Little Mermaid on March 14th. Is that different than the? But I thought you said it was at the Bolton Library. Is that different than the high school production? Is that, or is it in addition to the high school production?
Um, it's going to be hosted as like a storytime at the library. So that's on March 14th to 16th. And then I think there's the additional production too.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Not seeing anything. So Ryan, thanks so much. I'm sure you're busy packing tonight for your trip to state. So again, good luck.
We're scrambling around a couple minutes.
I hear you. Adios amigo. Alright, so moving on to our superintendent's report, I'm going to turn it over to Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. And thank you to the committee and everyone who was watching at home tonight. We have several items on the superintendent's report tonight that's coming to you from various members of the team. I'm going to just start by tossing it to Finance and Operations Director, Mr. Ross Mulcain, to talk about the Joint Finance and Advisory Committee Meeting last night.
Yeah, thank you Superintendent Downing. So last night, the district presented its proposed budget. For FY26, which was the version that was presented at the last school committee meeting. Which was update number two to the Joint FinCom Advisory Meeting between the towns of Bolton, Lancaster and Stowe. Overall, I think it was well attended. As compared to years past, it was, it was similar. So at that meeting, we presented the budget with a lens of the work that we've done to date. So how we got from the workshop to update number two. We also put a special lens and demonstrations on how the regional agreement works relative to enrollment to assessment. And fielded a lot of questions and curiosities around. The required contributions, which are calculations done at the state level. But again, I think it was good education and discussion. Overall, with regards to those topics. And again, putting an emphasis on how the regional agreement works. We certainly also presented the situation that the school district is in relative to that increase from FY25 to 26. And talked about the major levers that are behind that. I think our overall impression from the meeting that there was a shared commitment to creating the best educational experience possible for our students. But also being fiscally responsible and responsive to the conditions that our three towns are in. We thank all the participants for their time, their attention and their engagement with the budget process. And an additional thank you to the town of Bolton for hosting this year. The meeting materials from last night are posted for you in the school committee meeting tonight as far as the slide deck goes. And then we also have, we'll be posting it to the budget development page. That Ms. Hannigan, our communications specialist and I continue to work on. So people can view the recording and view the slides there as they can see the iterations of the budget as well. So again, I felt like it was a successful meeting in the sense that was all respectful and thoughtful discussion with regards to our budget. And I think that we were able to provide answers that made sense and were clear and transparent. So we continue to, you know, march our budget behind those pillars with our schools.
I also just want to thank Member Cohen, Member Playman and Member Gleason for joining us at the meeting last night as well.
Excellent. Thanks Ross. Are there any questions on the Joint Finance Advisory Committee Meeting update? Alright, so thanks everyone for fulfilling that element of the regional agreement. It is a meeting that we all agreed to create and attend, or rather. Plan and thanks Kirk for spearheading that and living up to the spirit of that.
Right. So the next piece we have is in regards to special education transportation for add district students. And as you know, we're looking for solutions on how to possibly mitigate some of those transportation costs. And I'm going to invite our Director of Student Services, Ms. Rowan Demanche, to talk about. One effort we're making to sort of chip away at that challenge. So Ms. Demanche?
Thank you Superintendent Downing. Can you hear me okay? Great. So as you know, as the community knows, and as you know, as a school committee, special education transportation costs really have skyrocketed this year. And as part of looking at some longer term solutions to help with that. We're kind of looking at offering out, which is not new, regulations, but really being more transparent and public about it. And as we begin our season to prep up for summer school, we will be sending out letters to families. Asking if they're interested in seeking reimbursement to provide transportation. And we want to see how it runs a summer to then offer it out, but we're going to just be more transparent about that to see if parents and. Want to access that reimbursement, which is part of a state regulation and is at the state rate. And is reimbursable through our department on a monthly basis and. And money directly back to our families. So we're just going to be offering that up and see if that can help with some of the transportation routes.
Good. Thank you.
Alright, so does anybody on the committee have any questions around this new initiative? Amy Cohen?
It seems like a great idea. I mean, I guess I was making an assumption that specialized transportation. Would, was required because it was kind of like something that as a parent you might not have access to, to get your kid to school. So I just don't, do you have a feeling for how accessible this option is for people who have to take advantage or are in this situation?
Yep. So yeah, specialized transportation is a related service through the IEP. And as part of that, we are required to provide transportation, but some of our families do opt to not place their children onto vans or buses. For whatever reasons they have. And we at that time will alert them that they can get reimbursement for providing that transportation as it's a related service. And so that's something we're just going to be more transparent about as an option for families if they choose to take it. If they can't because of working or they just don't have the schedule, we'll continue to set up the specialized transportation routes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Alright Kirk, keep it going.
Well, the next piece is mine, and that is the Power School update. Power School emails went out to. Everyone who exists in the Power School system, not just in Massachusetts, but across the entire country regarding. The data breach that happened at the end of 2024. That was a standard email that's required by law. Offering credit monitoring services through experience. So I just wanted to let the committee know that that was a universal email that went out. To folks that are just in the system. All receive that. So that's just a follow up on what was previously promised. And that came directly from Power School, not the school district. And then at this point, I think I'll just turn it straight over to Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend to talk about some report card revisions. Assistant Superintendent?
Thank you Superintendent Downing. We have some report card revision work underway. In grades one through eight, and this work really complements the work we've been engaged in with all of our curriculum work. In grades one through eight, as it relates to curriculum development and alignment and our implementation of high quality instructional materials for math. ELA and middle science. And so. Coming back into our report cards and taking a look at the reporting standards there is really timely and adjacent to our curriculum work. So that work is underway. Currently, we have a report card working group happen convened, made up of representatives across the district. And they are currently reviewing together our reporting standards for clarity and alignment and relevance. And the group will also be looking at our behavior and social work habits section of the report cards. And making revisions to those so they more closely and appropriately align with our Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate Competencies. So we can see the through lines of those competencies alongside our academic reporting tool. K through eight. Immediate next steps of the work include forming a kindergarten working group. Sharing draft versions of our revised report cards with our school councils. For feedback and also teaching and learning will be developing a front facing user guide for families. To improve understanding of the reporting tool. Also, as part of the work, teaching and learning has been gathering report cards from neighboring districts. To review how our neighboring districts are using a reporting tool to report out student progress. Both for content alignment and just for ease of use. Right now, our elementary families will recognize that our report card is really long. It's multiple pages. And so as we approach the work, we want to make sure that we're maintaining the integrity of the work. And we're reporting out on what's essential, but we also want to make sure that it's clear. And not cumbersome for families and for educators and is really telling a story of student progress over time. So I would like to personally thank our, the Neshoba educators who are engaged in that work all the way through grade eight and helping us with the process. And they're truly excited and engaged in helping us make that reporting tool more effective. And streamlined and really a useful tool to. Impact student learning in terms of reporting student learning and growth over time for our students. So I wanted to make sure the committee was aware that that work is happening. We are hoping to implement our revised report cards in the fall. So I'll make sure to keep the committee updated on our progress as we work with our school councils and we approach the, the end of the work. Keep the committee updated.
Thank you. That'll conclude the report, Madam Chair.
Great. Thanks guys. Any questions on that last piece or even the Power School update? Alright, not seeing any questions. I thank you for the work Laura. I think that that's a great initiative and we really appreciate you. Leveraging the school councils to give you some feedback from families. That's great. Alright guys, we're going to move on to our next item. We only have. One item in new business and that is the promised appointment for our final Dear J seat. And I'm going to ask Jackie to kind of cue this up a little bit and maybe even make a motion so that the committee can vote.
Sorry, I'm not feeling so great with these things. I just wanted to say thank you to the school committee for. Pressing pause on this, just wanting to make sure that we're crossing all our Ts and dotting our Is. But I'm pleased to share that a parent from Bolton has graciously volunteered to. Pending voting this evening to step into that 11th final position on Dear J for the remainder of the 2024, 2025 academic school year. And I just wanted to say thank you to Beth. I apologize if I pronounce her name, her last name incorrectly, but Fredinger, Fredinger, I think. And so thank you to Beth and to Dear J for their continued efforts. So I'd like to motion to approve Beth as the 11th final member appointed to Dear J this evening.
I'll second that. Thanks Jackie. And thank you to Beth for volunteering. The work is really important. We appreciate that 11th. Member to lift the weight. So is there, are there any questions from the committee? I just want to make a quick note that all of our advisories are annual appointments. And so we will revisit the Dear J Advisory Membership. For next year in June. And so this appointment and those who serve now will serve up and through this term. And then we'll reset. Alright, so I'm not seeing any questions. So let's take the vote. Jackie? Myself, yes. Sharon?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Uh, Joe? Think I lost Joe. Robin?
Yep.
Alright, Joe, last call? I think you had to step out to lead us, so we'll just go ahead. So welcome to Beth, to Dear J, and I'm sure Jackie will close that loop for all of us. Great. So let's step into the next item here and that is the Finance and Operations update.
Yeah, I'll introduce Finance and Operations Ross Mulcain to bring the update and then we'll have a discussion. About the Joint FinCom presentation. So that you heard about in the superintendent's report. Mr. Mulcain? Microphone, Mr. Mulcain?
Multitasking. Thank you. Just pulling up my agenda. So the operating budget report for January, Alita, do you want to bring that up? She doesn't jump on it, I can bring it up.
I can do it for you. Oh, there you go.
There it is. Thank you, Alita.
Master Alita, go ahead.
So as Alita is zooming in on that for everyone, I just want to call your attention to that there's no significant changes. To where we're at right now as compared to the end of December. We're still tracking as we were. We are continuing to watch all of these types of things. Again, this report goes through the end of January. And therefore, some of the things that we need to pay careful attention to over the next couple of months. Are exactly how long does this winter season continue? How much more snow do we get? You know, we're just about through this month and there's plowing costs that happened during February that will reflect it next time. And we'll see how long our heating season extends. If you remember, we had the benefit of a warm start to the school year, which continued. But our, our forecast is not complete on all of our. Utilities until the year is complete. Alita, I think we just lost the report on the shared screen, if you don't mind bringing it back up. While he's bringing that back up, it's in your meeting materials. You'll also notice that again, we're anticipating our special education line to be using some circuit breaker. But we don't anticipate that it's going to interrupt any sort of the operational surplus that you can see really effectively lies within the. Salary lines at the building level. One thing to note is we're paying careful attention to the substitute line, obviously. This came up in Budget and Warrant, as you recall, potentially during our budget development, we have increased our substitute line for next year. To better match our actuals over the last couple of years. So while that does look like it is. In deficit, we have already planned for next year to make some adjustment there and see how it plays out. So at that point, I can take any questions. This was reviewed with Budget and Warrant earlier this week. And again, no significant changes to our forecasting at this point.
Alright, does anybody have any questions for Ross on this one? Alright, looks good Ross. Thank you for that. Let's move on to our next item.
Yeah, so again, great meeting from my mind last night relative to the work that we've done on the budget so far with the Joint FinCom. I don't know if there's any questions about that process or how that meeting went at this point. Superintendent Downing, I know if you're intending on fielding any questions or providing any other detail.
Why don't you just describe the materials that we've included in the, in the meeting materials agenda for tonight?
Do you want me to pull them up and quickly just roll through them or?
No, I think we can just make mention to them because the committee should be familiar with all this information.
Yeah, there's, there's no new additional information in the Joint FinCom materials that were presented last night. Again, we really stressed sort of, here's where we started with our. Overall operating budget at the workshop and discussed the fact that this is the, the moment where we talk about, this is if we could have what we want. You know, and a full package for all of our students and each and every, each and every spot in our district. This is what it is. And we knew that that would need to come back and then we started walking it back. We walked them through the updates from budget update number one, both reductions, offsets and. Our salary adjustments, our reductions in salary. And our budget update number two and talked about where we had been prior to the health insurance premium coming through. And then also showed them directly the impact of that health insurance premium going up, that $528,000. Discussed with them, we removed the, you know, the deans of students and talked about the, the concern with that, obviously. But we were in a position and are in a position to do that. And then also talked about the fact that we increased our expectations on investment income earnings. So while the budget came down about $400,000, really the assessments to the town have gone down a total of $500,000 because we increased the revenue. We, again, like I said earlier, we did a lot of work about walking through the enrollment over time, both at the. Full level of the, the, the high school level, but also at the, more importantly, at the operational level across the district, that five year rolling average. Showed them how foundation enrollment has changed, but also how the minimum local contributions have changed over time. And obviously the impact on the variable assessment. So I think overall, really good, healthy understanding of how the budget works and comes together. And really good, healthy discussion and questions on where we're at, what else do we anticipate? Questions about, you know, state levers and those types of things. We talked about. The situation with special education and how the funding is sort of level on that. Superintendent Downing did a great bit of sharing about the, the legal advocacy that's happening across the state right now, just not from Neshoba. So I think that was a good, good bit of information for our folks there that are elected officials and appointed officials. So they understand where, where we're at and that this is just not a Neshoba phenomenon. We also signaled our concern about how does health insurance increases continue over the next several years? And that we are, we, just like I think all three towns are, being judicious with. And being cautious with using our revolving or balances as one-time funds for ongoing costs. And needing to be transparent and clear that, you know, we're, we're sort of at our limit of comfort. Level with those things right now and do not want to push those further. Discussion about E and D and all those types of levers. So from a full sort of regional financing or regional finance lens, I think there was a lot of good understanding and good discussion. Relative to the budget being proposed. And then obviously discussed our next steps.
And then the budget book itself, Mr. Mulcain?
Yep. So what you'll see is an updated budget book as of maybe an hour ago. So as we were preparing for the Joint FinCom meeting last night, I was going back through line by line in the. The executive summary and noticed that there was a duplication of some of our, our guidance staff. Because they get additional pay for those extra days that they work both before and after the school year. And that was applied sort of in a duplicate manner. So I had our staff today work that back out and make that correction. We've also had to apply an adjustment to the administrative salaries. The, the salary increase still stays at zero, but we said to the committee, we want to keep our folks whole. So when we had done the. Insurance adjustment for the administrative team, that was built on a 12% increase. So that insurance adjustment is now built on that 19.92% increase. So that changes things as well. So we were able to back out some of the duplicated numbers, but then put back in the increase to make sure that our administrative team stays whole. And people who take insurance with us don't make less money next year. They'll make the same amount of money as they do this year. So the overall adjustment to the operating budget is only a reduction of about $27,000. So no major changes, but again, we are line by line and double checking everything. As we anticipate and prepare for the budget hearing next week, which will be the final number that we put forward for vote for the school committee barring. Any major changes at the state level or something like that that happens between next Wednesday and the school committee vote on the Wednesday thereafter. Again, you know, we are, we are feeling like we are stretched as far as we can at this point. But we continue to double check and look at every little piece. And as news comes in or may not come in. We make adjustments, but we don't anticipate any major changes and have no major changes, obviously for tonight. We've done a significant amount of work. And that Superintendent Downing has talked about being painful for our district in different places. And we've, we've certainly made our sacrifices on our end relative to being, you know, fiscally responsible and fiscally responsive to the region. So at that point, I can, I can take any questions or comments or anything.
I'll, I'll jump in here. A couple of things I wanted to bring forward to the committee regarding this work is. There were some questions about enrollment trends that came up, so I pointed those committee members to pay attention to. Our school choice presentation and ultimately our school, school choice hearing in April. As you guys historically know, I show you the enrollment trends. So we can do that analysis. I'm happy to also report that all five representatives and then the Neshoba delegation to Beacon Hill have accepted my invitation to meet. And so I'll be meeting with them on March 6th to review these things. They're very concerned. I shared the letter that I sent to the community last Friday and we got very prompt responses. From our representatives and senators because they're engaged with us in looking for some solutions. I also want to point out to our committee and also the community out there. Their goal is in identifying the reductions we had to make. We had to get to a target budget number. And I'm going to repeat, that's the budget number for which we are going to operate. And it provides the structure, sort of the guardrails around us. We are still looking for. Solutions to some of the challenges that we have in the school system. So actual execution of those positions come September 1st, end of August. May look slightly different than what we presented to you today. Currently, I am on a tour of our schools. I'm doing office hours at each of our schools. To make myself available, avail myself to our employees to come in, sit down. To come in, sit down with me, ask questions about the budget. Uh, whether it pertains to them or, or doesn't pertain to them or general understandings. Um, I'm happy to report in the first two meetings I've had this week, we've had uh. Uh, many faculty members come and approach and have those discussions. And I'm receiving a lot of feedback. Um, one of the pieces I want to share with this committee is that, as you know, uh, w- we were working everything in our power to retain the dean positions. As critical uh, positions in the schools. Um, in my office hours and in other uh, communication channels, people are telling me those. Positionly critical to daily student life. They are the positions. That connect with students who struggle getting to school. The high school alone, uh, tardies at the high school have dropped. Dramatically due to the efforts of our dean at the high school, uh, Mr. Kaiser. And uh, building relationships with students, not uh, it's not coming at it, you know, you might think in a, in a conventional sense of. You, you, um, you know, str- offering strategies of punishments. No, it's the opposite. It's building relationships, building rationale, getting kids in their seats. The number one pathway to learning is, is you gotta be in the seat. And when you're in the seat, then we can do some good things. So um, I'm sharing that with you because as we come up with uh. Options, uh, we're going to be looking to figure out ways to return the deans to the budget, knowing. We have to stay within the constraint of the total budget. Um, and so uh, that's all we have for you on that topic, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thanks Kirk. I see Amy Cohen.
Yeah, I just want to kind of follow up on that last thought. Um. What? Flexibility will you have to, to move things around once a vote, a budget is voted? In, in terms of, I guess what I'm trying to understand is if you're able to preserve the middle school dean positions.
Yeah.
Um, and we vote a, a budget number. That assumes that those positions aren't funded. Um. I want to make sure as a school committee member that I, I also understand like. What positions are protected? You know what I mean? Like, are we, how do we understand? That you could preserve the dean position, but then another program is eliminated, like.
All, all that, all that will be presented to you and we're not going to eliminate programs. It's, it's a matter of looking at. You know, what are, we gotta look at, you know, the demands of things. This is uh, springtime, so. Uh, we know that uh, individual education plans, other learning plans, language plans are being developed, so we understand. The demand of how we need to employ, uh, deploy our employees. Um, and so those things change. Uh, we also know that we're waiting for kindergarten numbers to come in. So if those kindergarten n- numbers at center and Florence order school don't actualize to a need. Of four sections, that's a possibility. So there's lots of levers to that. Um, as the committee, you vote the budget number. If we were to shift. Spending out of a line in the budget, meaning out of say salary and into professional development. We would have to bring that forward to the committee for vote. But if it stays within that bucket, within that sector, that's within the operational purview of the superintendent. Um, but you know, Ms. Cohen, these are things that I'm going to be updating our community on um, and updating this committee on along the way.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, just to clarify for the community too, the Mass General Law, maybe it's just regulation. It says that anytime anything is moved from one cost center to another, it requires school committee approval, right Kirk?
That's correct.
And um, but salaries is just one of the cost centers.
Right.
Right? And so you can, once we approve the salary number. You can kind of deploy that number in the way that you see best suits the needs of the kids before us.
That's correct.
Okay. But you couldn't, you, you couldn't like fire a teacher and then buy the facilities truck. Without our approval.
Correct. That's exactly right.
Okay, good. All right, uh, Jackie.
I think to um, mirror and then also expand upon what Amy just said that. When Mr. Mulcarren says that there's significant sacrifices that we're making in order to be fiscally responsible. For community members to truly understand what that actually means. And I think that. We have a very involved board that I think does the work, um, but for community members who may not understand. Part of the efforts of the district over the past two years that I've been um, part of the school committee has been a lot about capacity building. Um, and keeping kids supported, whether they're in special education or general education and. I'm very happy that you brought up the dean position because that is a critical position. As are all the special education positions um, that are being considered and that. Supporting kids every day and meeting them where they're at is, that's our mission, which is just so important. Um, I also wanted to mention, and I, I'm very pleased that you mentioned the attendance because. Um, I was actually going through our district report card and our attendance is looking so good. Kids who are in school just do better. This is what we know. Um, and so I just. Encourage our community members to stay informed about this process and. Go to the budget page and do your due diligence as voting members of our community.
Thanks all. All right. So thanks again Kirk for all of the endless hard work that you and your team, including, you know. Most of all Ross, but all of your team for all the hard work you guys are doing to get this budget to where we need it to be. So that we can get our townspeople to prove it at town meeting. Um, and so we will uh, just emphasize that the hearing. Is set to take place next Wednesday on March fifth, if this is required. By law and also by our regional agreement. So anybody who would like to hear more. Or communicate with the school committee and the superintendent, you can attend that hearing. It will be virtual and it's next Wednesday night. Uh, the notice is already posted. So let's move on to our uh, last item here. And that is the school district calendar. And Kirk, I'll let you tee this up here. I think. Um. I think maybe, actually Kirk, before you do that, I'm going to ask Amy to make a motion on this and then we can kind of mo- go from there. Amy, do you have that handy?
Yeah, I moved to adopt this school year twenty twenty-five slash twenty twenty-six district calendar as presented.
I'm going to second that. And um, anything that you wanted to add to this Kirk, because I know maybe a couple of changes were made from last time.
Yeah, I'm actually going to bring forward our human resources director, Ms. Jessica Murdock to uh, uh, update you. So, Ms. Murdock.
Thank you Superintendent Downing and thank you members of the school committee. Um, so I provided a new copy to the group. I believe it is in your packet. We've made the updates based on the conversation that we had last uh, last meeting. And so what I have done is corrected and made those edits to where the holidays were listed. And then I've also notated the early releases. Um, I want to note that one in your packet. Where it says NRS early release for midterms, um, the one below it said midterms as well, but I recently just added that. To say finals, so I apologize for that, that error. Um, otherwise, I think all of the information that was discussed last week has been incorporated. And then I would just draw your attention to the very bottom of the calendar where we've made a notation. Based on the feedback from the committee to not include the dates of the. Um, holidays that may be in observance, but to add. A calendar where we'll say all observances, so a person who is interested in looking at. The different uh, religious holidays and just general holidays can see that at the calendar of observance link. So I think that has addressed all of the committee's questions and thoughts. And so if there's any questions, I certainly happy to answer those.
Thanks Jess. Go ahead, Amy Cohen.
So this, this incorporates a change to the high school schedule, right? Where it's early releases and not late starts.
It is correct. They, there was late starts and. I had shared with the committee at the last meeting, um, member Cohen, that the principal. Had done a poll with her teachers and with other administrators and they felt that it would more align with all of the classroom activities. Um, with the high school and making sure that they were using that time and they wouldn't lose any learning time as well.
Um, and. I guess, you know, I, I. My only other comment is related to the use of the um. Reference to the ADL link and I mean, I. I think it's a separate issue. I, I think I, I would like to see maybe. Maybe we could put this in the parking lot again, um, Leah, but to just kind of revisit. Um, the issue of how we can, can we, how we can raise awareness of. Holidays that are celebrated within our community. Um, in a way that's. I think a little bit more accessible than this, this link um, to the ADL. Resources ca- of calendar observances. Um, I, I just, I've clicked on that link and I. Not sure it's, it's as useful as it's intended to be. So that's my only comment.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
I, I want to use this opportunity to thank Dr. Reiner for finding uh, the Dear J work on this that was done a couple of years ago. It would, I think Ms. Cohen's uh, request is spot on. Yeah, I would recommend that. That work be directed to the Dear J to focus in on and drill down on that, to then return to the committee. Um, and thinking Ms. Cohen, I hear your focus is. In some of the information that's in there, but readily accessible to people uh, in a way that's almost like a, like a um. PR is not the right word, but. Uh, a way that's easily accessible that they understand how we treat holidays in the school system.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that.
I wasn't finding the right words there.
I think that, I'll just add one more detail here. I think that there are two sides to this coin. Side one is. Excusing work for a kid who is observing a religious holiday. But I think the other thing that we talked a lot about way back when is educating our district. Employees, everyone to understand when the major holidays are so that big things don't get scheduled on those days.
That's right.
And so there are two big elements here. One of them, parents are kind of responsible for. They call the school, they say my kid is observing a holiday, I want their work to be excused or whatever the case may be, and we mark it in power schools. An excused absence and all the other good things follow. But the other half of this is how can the district make sure that they're not scheduling big field trips and things like that on Rosh Hashanah, for example? Um, so. Um, Amy, I'm going to put it in the parking lot and then uh, we will also, like Kirk said, bring it to Dear J too.
Um, and uh, Madam Chair, I will ask Ms. Masterson if she would add this to my agenda. For our next principals meeting and, and we'll be reviewing this with our principals as well. And uh, I'll work with Ms. Murdock on that communication with our principals.
Thank you. Uh, Jackie. Did I lose you?
Um, just as a point of clarification. Is the request from the school committee that Dear J look at the calendar? In anticipation of a future meeting? Or is this ongoing work for next year's calendar, like at a later time?
I'm wondering Kirk if it makes sense for you to um, address this with your leadership team and then see what you might need from Dear J. And you can kind of funnel that through Jackie?
Happy to do that.
Okay, great. All right, thanks. John.
Thank you. Um, just a quick note, it seemed to me that it would be best policy to just include the names of the. Legal holidays on the list there. It seemed like if we're, we're following. Desi's suggestion with our policies and on their page for legal holidays, it names the names. Also just seems like we're. We're required to observe them by the state. It seems like we should be educating our students. Uh, what, you know, why, or you know, at the very least include the name. Just, just seems pretty simple and straightforward. I, if I heard in our last meeting, there was some suggestion of taking him off to. To not offend people, but again, we're kind of mandated to have the holiday, to observe the holiday. And um, one of our stated goals for our, for our kids is to educate them in a way that makes them internationally. International, that seems like, sort of, sounds like the reason why it's coming off is basically to hide it from the kids. And that just seems the antithesis to. Educating the kids. So I just wanted to bring that up.
I agree with you, John. I think that what we've said in the past and I, and I kind of still, this is what I use as my guiding star on this one. Is that the calendar is not a tool to educate. It's ju- you know, there are so many other good ways that we could do this for our kids. I think the calendar is just a tool to identify when the buildings are closed. And that we can find other methods. And that's, I think, what Kirk's going to do with his leadership team. To help bring that awareness and build that out so that we do have robust observance and um. Understanding and recognition. But in my opinion, I think the calendar should just be a tool where we say, these are the days where it's closed. These are the days we have early starts, late starts, whatever the case may be. And um, leave it at that. But is there anybody else who has something, Shandor?
Uh. What defines a holiday and is December twenty-fourth really a holiday?
Yeah, I will answer that for you. The holidays that are mentioned on there are the holidays that are recognized by Congress. Um, and so there was an interesting, actually a case on this a, a couple of years back when President uh, Biden. Uh, named Columbus Day as indigenous, indigenous people's day. He did that through an executive order, not through an act of Congress. Um, and in doing so, Congress, you know, going back in time. Uh, selected Christmas Day as an actual holiday. Um, and so the tradition has always been. And so Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth is not recognized as a federal holiday in the same sense, but I could be wrong on that one. But it, it is to notify which holidays are identified by Congress as federal holidays.
But Patriots' Day isn't a federal holiday and it's shaded green.
And that, that is.
We're not just following federal holidays, we're following state ones. But I don't think December twenty-fourth is a state or federal holiday.
Yeah. So that, that's exactly right. There is some, it's, it's not a hundred percent exclusive to that rule.
Um, uh, so I think that it's not necessarily a holiday as much as it is holiday break.
Yeah. Much in the same way the day after Thanksgiving is not a holiday, but is warranted as a day off of school.
Saying no school, and that would clarify it.
Yeah, seriously. No, you didn't even have to use the word holiday. I mean, there's a, there's a motion.
About is the color coding is, should December twenty-fourth be orange and not green?
Yes.
Yes. Very good. We'll take that and as you, we'll, we'll make that adjustment. Uh, so when you give the motion as discussed, we can make that.
Okay, very good. Uh, Sharon?
I'm just wondering, first of all, what is the um, title on this calendar? What is it called? What is the calendar called? It's this twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar? That's right. So. It's, it sounds like where we're going with this is that this calendar is. Perhaps one of several calendars that we're going to end up with. This is the school closing or school open dates. Um, so this calendar is specific to when the district is open or when the district is not. Yes. And then perhaps we have another calendar, which is more geared towards. Observances. And that then is where we. Highlight or. Educate or wha- whatever the word you want to use for it is, but where we include all of the other pieces. Which is, you know, these named holidays, the religious holidays. Um, and all of those other things as a separate. Um, and all of those other things as a separate. Piece, a separate document.
Awesome. I'm gonna have Kirk kind of log that in his brain and when you speak with your team and.
Yep.
Brainstorm this. Let's make it part of the conversation.
You're right.
All right, guys, we have a motion on the floor of to accept this calendar with that one small change. So I'm gonna take the vote. I vote yes. Scott?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
John?
I'm sorry, was there a discussion about the link on the bottom? Is, are we, were we changing that?
We're, no, not for this time around, but there's, it's gonna go in the parking lot for next time.
Yeah, uh, yes.
Okey doke. Uh, Jackie?
Yeah.
Robin?
Yep.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Lindsay?
Yes.
Okay, guys, thanks for that. So we have a calendar for the following year, so parents can plan their days off. Um, all right, so the only item next is the next agenda. And I know that the hearing is next. We'll get a short update at that hearing as well, but the meeting after that will be the very important budget vote. Which is required by the regional agreement. So we're gonna hit that date as well. Um, the planning calendar is there for you. Is there anything that anybody wants me to consider for the agenda for next time? In addition to what's already there?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I know a lot of, of um. Community members. Schools are wonderful and also very complicated and people have a lot of questions about. Um, the information that was shared on the slides. Just in terms of like directing people to the most appropriate channels. If they had specific questions about, other than redirecting people to the slides that list like, you know, how we map out that. Is there any way, I guess basically to have a point person or someone with either within the administration or the school committee? If community members had questions about the last iteration of the budget?
Uh, Scott, are you volunteering?
Well, so the budget warrant committee actually talked about this on Monday and we are going to be having a meeting of budget warrants on the Thursday, the 6th, right after the, the hearing. For, for specifically with the purpose that any community members that have questions about the budget can come to that meeting and ask them there.
Thank you.
That's gonna be 7:00 PM on the 6th. And the only agenda item is the budget.
Thanks Scott.
That might, um, okay. So that's not necessarily an item for next agenda, but um, I appreciate you letting us all know about that. Um.
Yeah, I have.
Something for the next agenda, Amy?
Nope, actually it's not.
Sorry. I can't really go off script. Anything else for the next agenda? And if not, Amy, you can just call me later. Uh, all right, everybody. So I'm not seeing anything else. I will build the agenda as we always do with Kirk's, Kirk and lead's help. And then uh, let me know if you have anything or need anything in the meantime, but uh, I'm gonna move to adjourn for this evening.
Second.
Oh, I think Jackie might have gotten it, so I'm gonna give it to her. Uh, I vote yes. Scott?
Yes.
Jackie? John?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Robin? Is that a yes, Robin?
Yes, yep.
Sorry. Lindsay?
Yes.
Shandor?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Joe? We are adjourned, everybody. Fifty-four minutes.